Three changes or additions to the agenda. Yep, we want to add in personnel, we have two resignations. I'm a baseball coach, I'm a kindergarten teacher. We also have new hired on the NASO U Camp, and that's Christine Simmons, who is a parent educator. And then we added IMK to the move our June working. Okay, item four, consent agenda. Would you like your motion, please, for the consent agenda?
I'm moved that the board approved the consent agenda as presented.
Then moved in second, discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, I have five personnel, except resignations. Resignation, several summer school NASO U Camp contracts. And then we add Miss Simmons as a parent educator. These are personal items.
Moved that the board approved the personal changes as modified?
Second? Moved in second, discussion? No discussion?
I'll show me.
Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Item six, public comment. Alright, I've just been made aware of the fact that this meeting is being recorded, just so that everybody understands that. Alright, so now for community input, and we're gonna try to keep this, there's several people who'd like to speak. I'm gonna try to keep this about three minutes. And I'm not gonna hold you at three minutes and one second, but if you would be courteous enough, you would try to keep it as brief as possible. And also professional, and respectful to people that we may be addressing. So if we can do that, and we have pamphlets here, so that everybody understands the parameters of community input. So at this time, I'm gonna call Annie Strange.
Good evening. I want to share my positive experience with Dr. Pass as superintendent.
We think he is being down here. I'm sorry.
Alright, I'll spin around. We're just getting going with having new boys in schools, so I'm sure there are a lot of important things of having a successful superintendent that I'm not aware of. But in my experience, it's been nothing less than satisfied. Everyone has their passions where they think change needs to be, and a group of us saw it in our food system. So our group met, we did some research, we wrote a proposal, and we met with Dr. Pass. He immediately found a school, a few schools pressed a visit, that were doing what we wanted. Parents and administrators from other schools couldn't believe how supportive our district was being, and willing to make that big of a change. We now have home-cooked food in our school. And again, as a parent is getting going, I sometimes question the thought of thinking about opportunities that are happening in bigger schools around us. So seeing Dr. Pass looking into bringing programs like the Chinese immersion here satisfies my contentment, and it excites me to think of more of these kinds of possibilities. I have also watched the white keys address people and kids with thoughts and theory in the lunchroom and hallways, as well as the community meetings and evolving. I know that we have been through quite a few superintendents with a range of personalities and agendas, and I guess I'm just not sure what would make everyone happy. So as a committed parent and community member here, I would like to see what more Dr. Pass has offer us.
Alright, Greg Nelson?
We're gonna just cut to try to state what you'd like to state, so bear with me and I'll, you know, about three minutes, but it may not be as thorough than I could be. I know most of you know me, but I don't know if Mr. Hyland does. I'm Greg Nelson. I grew up in Rosberg, graduated in nineteen eighty-one, NASO High School. I came back to teach in nineteen eighty-seven, did near twenty-six years. Three daughters, two graduated from NASO, are in college, one's a junior at NASO. And this is out of character for me. It's a rare occasion that I will stand up in an area like this and voice my concerns. It's just, it's not who I am. I'm far from perfect, and I do not make, I really make an effort not to point out flaws in the world. That's just, that's who I am. But I've spent the last four years, and this is honest, I've spent the last four years avoiding you guys at things like graduations and games and weddings, because I was afraid you'd ask me a question and I don't want to answer it, but I feel now is the time. I'm aware that many people here have been contacted on both sides to be here tonight to voice opinions, both positive and negative. And I just have a couple of requests for the board. I request that you're open-minded, and you listen to what is being said. I think some of us feel you made up your mind before you walked in the door, and I want you to be open-minded. And don't pass judgment until you've heard what you have to, these people have had to say. This is our school. You've been elected as stewards to make it successful, so I would like you to, you know, make sure you listen to what's being said. Like many others here, I can say a lot of things, really nice things about the administration and Dr. Pass. But there are some things that I want to point out tonight that concern me. Roland Barth, he's the director of principal center at Harvard University, and I want to read what he states. He states, "The nature of relationships among adults within a school has a greater influence on the character and quality of that school, and on the student accomplishments than anything else. Relationships are the most important thing for student accomplishment. If relationships between administrators and teachers are fearful, competitive, suspicious, and corrosive, then qualities will disseminate throughout the school community." I feel we've reached this unhealthy level. Rumor has it that the board is receiving multiple calls, they're quitting answering the phone, they're not returning calls. That's unhealthy. Our current bond has gone down, and the second time it goes down further, that's unhealthy. Looking at what appears here to be a divided community, that's unhealthy. You've received feedback from the teachers that show current relationship between the administration and teachers is unhealthy. A clear majority of the teachers have expressed a lack of trust in the superintendent's ability to lead this district. Morale is the worst I've experienced in twenty-six years. These are unhealthy. Barth also states that unless issues surrounding adult relationships are repaired, school improvement is impossible. So, I know the teachers have asked to have a climate survey completed for the last four years to repair some of these issues, but there has been refusal by the superintendent and the board to do that. That is what got us here today. It is my opinion that we need to change our leadership to begin a healing process with our school community. This is why I request that we do not extend our superintendent's contract at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Berman? Is Chris here?
I didn't know if I'd be able to talk tonight.
Speak up, please.
I didn't know if I'd be able to talk tonight. I think I've self-induced a lot of stress and anxiety around this moment. Because I kind of live in fear right this very second about what I'm about to say. I know many will say it's unjustified from their own world and their own lens. But I care, and I feel like there's many opportunities to speak openly in public over a phone, or in front of a person, or in front of a group. But there's not always an opportunity to speak in a way that ensures that he feels safe, providing that feedback. So I'm out here on a limb, and my objective is to be fair. To echo some of great, greatest concerns and thoughts, I think there's a lot of great things that go on in this district. I could ask for no other better opportunity than to live in this community and have my child go to this school. I love this school. Coming from a bigger city and a bigger district, I know how lost kids and parents get in the mix. And I'm invested in this community and in this district for not one year, three years, five years, ten years, but likely until the rest of my life. And I want to see what's best for kids, and I think everybody does. My, my goal is not to place judgment. Twenty-five years ago, I entered the business school at the University of Washington, and I'm not laying claim that I know everything like Greg said too. And it's my business cap that I put on right now, and I look at organizations, and ones that are healthy and ones that maybe can improve the health. I think that we're at a crossroads right now with a couple of things. I think looking over the last five years, organizations like OSPI and the Center for Teachers Effectiveness, I think is what it is, are shouting accolades for the work that the teachers do in our classroom. They do exemplary work. I love the teaching faculty here. None of them are perfect, and I accept that. And I also embrace and support whatever they do. And what they do results in youth's optimal learning development and opportunity, and it also brings accolades to this school district. And the trickle effect of being recognized at those levels brings a host of all other benefits. They come to this school because of those teachers. I'm most concerned, and I can't speak to specific experiences, but I'm most concerned that the teaching faculty may have reached a point in their experiences and working here day in and day out, such that they felt that it was, they needed to take time out of their own life to develop some sort of a mechanism, some sort of a survey, something that protected them individually, to share feedback because they want change, because they want this district to operate at the highest level possible. That they want to feel supported, and that they want to feel that they have good relationships with our administrative body. I think that that's what they want. They just want to feel empowered and appreciated. And somewhere along the lines, and I don't know all the details, but it's my perception through my lens as a community member, that maybe that's what's going on, and I'm concerned about that. Because I know that if over time, they continue to have those thoughts or feelings, that will compromise the learning environment for our children and their ability to learn. It will wear on people. In terms of the bonds, that's just a voice that the community has. It's confidential, it's safe. People can vote however they want. People who are supportive of it, like myself, are more than happy to say, "I support the bond, I want it to pass," and certainly there's favor that comes from that. It does not fall on deaf ears. And yet, even though invitations are made for people to make phone calls, or come up to board meetings, or have independent meetings, how many people who voted no say, "Yes, I want to come up here with a no vote on my T-shirt and say, 'I voted against you.'" I just, I challenge for people to think that way, because I think there's a lot of people in the community that would love to share their thoughts.
Chris, you've been for six minutes now, I'm gonna ask you to try and summarize it.
Okay. I would simply just ask that, I'm not asking that the superintendent resign, I'm not asking that his contract be terminated this last year, and I'm not in favor of a contract extension at this point. I do believe in an opportunity for Mr. Pass to have that opportunity to work on relationships with the teaching faculty and with the community over an evaluation period that would be designated by the board, and then simply to revisit the possibility of an extension at some point in time down the road, based on specific performance standards wrapped around those issues.
Summer Johnson?
Hi. My name is Summer Johnson. I first came to this school as a parent, and for the last two years, I've been a teacher. And I just have to say that my experiences with Dr. Pass have been wonderful. I have, I, I might not be the most popular among the teachers, but I didn't even know there was any problems with Dr. Pass until I go to a union meeting and found out, and heard other things. So I was influenced by others, but the opportunities that I have had with him, I worked with him on the food service program to change the lunches in the school and breakfast. I worked with him as a parent before I ever worked at the school. He was open-minded, he was willing to listen to feedback, he was willing to come with us to visit schools. It was like nothing I'd ever seen before. I didn't know that superintendents can be that open, honestly. I was really, really impressed. I've also worked with him on, with the CBA program, and I feel like Dr. Pass is just very forward-thinking, and he's open-minded. And while I might not be the most popular person for saying that, that's my honest opinion. I have been completely impressed with the relationships I've had with him, and with the time I've actually gone and talked him about other things that, you know, don't relate to school as much, and he's been very open-minded and willing to take the time out of his day to talk to me about it. And I would actually like to see what else he has offered the school. I think that sometimes people who are open-minded don't necessarily get, you know, all the support, because they might be a little bit differently than others. But in my opinion, I would like to see his contract renewed.
Mitzi Hunter?
Good evening. I'm Mitzi Hunter, and I was raised, I gotta take these off when I look at it. I was raised in this community. I graduated from NASO High School in nineteen seventy-six. I left NASO for college. I taught for nine years at Wilka Valley High School. Now, my dream was always to come back and teach in this school district, and I have been for the past nineteen years. Tonight I speak for the NASO Braze River Valley Education Association. First, the education association would like to express their appreciation to the school board for the very important role that you play in our community. We recognize that your job can be difficult, time-consuming, and underappreciated. Thank you for your dedicated service. Over the past three years, the unit has become increasingly concerned about leadership, decision-making, and communication. There have also been growing concerns about school climate. These concerns have been voiced to administrators and school board members. There seems to be the perception that these are not the concerns of the majority of the unit members, but they are. It is very difficult for members to express their concerns with district leadership, as there is a fear of retribution, which is why so few staff bring concerns to the board. Some members have been told they cannot speak to the school board members about things that concern them. The association is not alone in their concerns. There have been numerous issues over the past three years, many resulting from poor communication. Parents have removed their children from the district. This year, we had a double bond failure, a very clear message from the voters that all is not well in the school district. Will two failed bonds and no change in the direction we're heading lead to a failed M and O? The community has become divided over the issues. This does not bode well for the children in our schools. Dr. Pass has a year remaining on his current contract, so time is not of the essence in extending his contract tonight. Not extending the contract at this time would allow for more input from the community, time to mend fences, and time to do a collaborative climate survey. Contract renewal could be revisited in the future, and if the issues have been resolved, then offer Dr. Pass a contract at that time. Earlier, I said that your job was basically thankless, but you have chosen to take on this important role. Part of that job includes listening to the concerns of the community and the school employees alike, and then making the hard decisions. The most important task for you is to choose the best leadership possible to guide our district. Tonight, you will be making a decision that will impact our schools and community for years to come. The teachers' union believes the board should be working to create a new vision with leadership that will bring us together for the common cause of educating our children, not dividing us. The unit respectfully asks board members to carefully consider the concerns we see from community and staff members alike as you make decisions about the short and long-term direction of our school. I would again like to thank the board for the valuable work that you do.
Okay, right now, I'm gonna jump ahead because Sean Easton needs to go to work soon, and I would like everybody the opportunity to speak.
My name's Sean Easton. You know, I got a couple things to say about some concerns I have with the Mandarin program. Prior to doing that, though, I'd just like to briefly mention, this is as close as we get to a community meeting here. Having said that, as a community, we need to remember, for thoughts on our first little Jessie Harmon who was struggling in hospital with her family from that tragic accident. Would my just like say a brief prayer for her, participating with. Heavenly Father, I pray for little Jessie Harmon, best for miraculous healing in her body, and that you restore her, Lord, to the wildfire she was previously. Through the doctor's wisdom, the nurse's, your spirit be upon her family, comfort her, give them strength. In the name of Jesus Christ. Anyway, starting to transition from that to this, apologize. Sorry to get that out there, though. I'm a kindergarten parent this year. My son's going into kindergarten in September. They got a Mandarin program in place, kindergarten first grade. We had kindergarten roundup last Tuesday. This was the first time this program's been presented to the community after it passed, which took me by surprise. I was there in the classroom, kindergarten rounded, as usual. Teacher said, "Hey, in fifteen minutes, we have a meeting on Mandarin program, room 201." I was quite astonished to see a couple of parents there, this one mother in particular who was like, "What is a Mandarin program?" You know, the look on her face was, "Why is this now with Dunk on?" Anyway, we had this meeting, it was a great meeting, and we had Michelle Ico on the line. She's a state employee representative of the superintendents and foreign language in schools. Open discussion, she was on speakerphone. I asked a couple of questions, one of whom was, "How important is it to have community involvement, parent involvement, in a Mandarin program? You know, implementation, progress, process?" Her response obviously was, "That is absolutely crucial. You gotta have community meetings, parent involvement, PTAs, the whole nine yards." There's been none of that. I knew nothing about the Mandarin program until last Monday, when I got on the internet, three, four hours, educated myself. Another question I asked her was, "My research for Mandarin programs says that, okay, you got Mandarin language, Mandarin culture, or the Chinese culture is a huge influence in that. Anyone who knows anything about Chinese culture, the last twenty-five hundred years, Confucius has dominated their ideology. You can research his one thought, but my question was, what influence does that have on our students?" She didn't have the best answers. She said, "That was a good question." She said, "You know, other than, because some of the teachings like decency, respect," that's all she could really think of, is just poor, poor teaching, which those in itself are fine, but when you get deeper into it, there's some issues that parents may or may not be concerned about. I mean, you got the Confucius Institute, which is where we got our grant from, from one of the teachers. So that, that's, researched that too, Confucius Institute, researched that on Wikipedia. Came across an article in the Washington Post from two thousand and seven. It talked about the very first immersion program, the Mandarin immersion program in this country, nineteen ninety-six, at Tom McElementary School, Washington DC. They did a follow-up, the first graders that are now seniors. What they found was that of that first grade classroom, now seniors, of the twenty-two students, three had, all had dropped out, the three. But what they found was that there is inadequate coordination among grades, uneven assessment systems, lack of resources, lack of appropriate materials, inadequate teacher development. When they hit the ninth grade level, they, teachers said they weren't ready for Chinese Mandarin. But I asked Michelle Ico, I said, "Have these issues been resolved in this program? Are these, there's things that they've worked out, bugs?" And she answered very honestly, "No, those are still serious concerns. Those are all hurdles that have to be overcome in programs like this." I appreciated her honesty, but those are questions I asked. She's an expert. She nominated us for the Confucius Grant. She has her hands heavily in this program. She was told that, the only reason she nominated us, or one of the reasons, was because she was led to believe that we were gonna have a growing, continuing program, and that's why we were nominated for that Confucius Grant. My, you know, I'm thinking, okay, where is this program gonna go? I've heard K through six. If that's gonna happen, where's the infrastructure for the school? Where are we gonna come up with seven new classrooms? Where are we gonna add a new school, open up Rosberg, start blessing kids? There's some huge concerns there. Teachers' aides, we're gonna have to have aides for all these classes. So there's a huge thing with resources and finances, infrastructure, where are we gonna house the kids? Those are all things we need to, you know, work, point out, we've gotta come up with a game plan. We've got the money, we've got the program, community input, that's past that phase. So I just encourage the administration to get on the ball, with what Michelle Ico said, and she said, you know, answering these questions, you gotta, you gotta do it now. Now's when you've gotta find these answers out. Another question I have, I'm sure we'll get an answer soon, who's gonna be the English kindergarten teacher this year? I'm opting out of the program for various reasons, so I'd like to know personally, who's my child's kindergarten teacher gonna be? Where's the classroom gonna be? What's that classroom gonna look like? I don't want it to look like some, you know, special ed classroom, kind of that. I want my child to have a kindergarten experience just like my grandma, my parents, and I have here in NASO. So there's a lot of issues. This is a beast of a program. It's huge. There's many caveats to it. If you wanna research it, I came across a great brochure called Chinese Language Learning in the Early Grades. Type that in Google, get it on PDF, it's about sixty pages. It'll tell you everything you want to know about Chinese Mandarin program. So, yeah. Thank you.
Debbie Denny?
I too is gonna address the immersion program and my concerns, but since there's such a long list, I'll just get to the other things and see you next June. So on the superintendent contract, this is personal, not union, nothing else, it's just my belief. I believe a school or size needs a combination superintendent-principal due to budgets, including the state budget, where we don't know where it's going, and the population of this school. There is a great need to be budgeting money to hire qualified teachers for specific areas in the high school this coming year, to make sure we address some issues, and I would like to see we have enough money for teachers. And some school districts are now doing that. If you read about, some other districts are trying to cut back so they make sure they have the programs they need. I'm suggesting to the board to look at this idea of a combination superintendent-principal before extending any administrative contracts. The other thing I'd like to address, I've been here for thirty-six years. I've, you know, rode the roller coaster, morale high, morale low, morale high, and it's a roller coaster, good times and bad times. This is a pretty mixed thing going on right now. The morale in our school amongst the teachers, and I would say faculty and staff, is The morale in our school amongst the teachers, and I would say faculty and staff, is pretty low right now, and it's as low as I've seen it since the, quote, Jerry Black days. If you were around then, the Jerry Black days were pretty ugly of what was...